Good evening, we're going to call together the Monday, October 21st, 2024 Regular Board of Education Meeting. If you can join me, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Treasurer, can you call the roll?
Mr. Ratliff.
Here.
Mr. Wibbling.
Mrs. Dyer.
Here.
Ms. Swanger.
Present.
Mr. Guyer.
First item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So what I'd like to do, if it's okay with the Board of Education, is that we do have a couple of proclamations that we would like to recognize some of our students tonight, in this particular case, student athletes. It's under, right now it's listed under New Business because we're asking the Board to vote on that. However, I'd like to make a recommendation that we would move that up, if we could, under Superintendent's Report, so the student and the student athletes could get recognized and they wouldn't have to stay here through the rest of the meeting since this is all down the list. So, I guess with your blessing, the Board's blessing, I'd love to...
Are you guys okay with that? Hearing no objection, go ahead, Mr. Superintendent.
All right, so, tonight we have a couple of proclamations to recognize a couple of our teams, one individual on our team, and then our, first we're going to start with our girls tennis team. So our girls tennis team this year was the 2024 MOAC Champions. So what I'd like to do is turn things over to Sean Kearns, our Athletic Director, and have him introduce the coach, the team, and maybe say a few things.
Face this way, again, that's why they have to stand behind that.
Right behind.
So the camera can pick you up.
So this is the Marion Harding High School Girls Tennis Team for this fall. They are the MOAC Champions this fall, won 11-1 in the conference and 17-4 overall. I'm going to let Coach Blaine Pitts tell you some more specifics about the team, and then I'll wrap it up.
Okay, well, these are five of our seven varsity players, Kaia Berry and Kira Camp couldn't make it tonight, so this is five of the seven varsity players. As Coach Kearns said, we were 11-1 in the conference, we actually shared the conference with Shelby, given their due. 11-1 overall. Also had a couple, we had a conference champion, Abby Hertz, won the conference at third singles. Also, Reyna Smith and Audrey Fiesel qualified for district. So, six time in seven years we've had somebody down there, and in the six other times, we didn't, or the five other times prior to this, we did not win, but they actually won a match down there before losing to New Albany, so they had a happy year, a nice run in the postseason. So, very proud of them, had an outstanding season. Probably exceeded our expectations, honestly. We'd hope to do that, but they played really well and had an awesome season, so. And we have one, two, let's see, Reyna, Audrey, and Abby, we're going to miss them, they're the seniors that are here tonight, so appreciate having us here.
I do want to say one other thing that I was very impressed with, I'm going to embarrass you a little bit here, Audrey. Coach Pitts does a really neat thing, he does an attendance award for perfect attendance each year that he has a team. And Audrey, had you played tennis ever before you were a freshman? Never played tennis before she was a freshman. She is going to get her fourth straight perfect attendance award. She has not missed one minute of one practice in all four years. So it's amazing what you can do when you show up and you're coachable. So, great job, guys. I know they're going to have some certificates for you as well, and that, will that come later?
Yeah, so I think what we'd like to do is have the Board read the proclamation and take action on that. We do have certificates, we do have frames for the certificates. We are in the process of getting all the Board signatures, so once we do that, we will frame those and then make sure you get those as well. And then after this proclamation, we have one other student we'll recognize, and I think we'd love to get some pictures taken, if we could, with the Board, and the players as well. So, we appreciate it, and can we take action on this?
Yep. So I am going to read what is under New Business 9A. The Superintendent recommends the approval of the proclamation honoring the 2024 MOAC Girls Champions. Whereas the Marion Harding High School Girls Tennis Team has displayed outstanding skill, dedication, and sportsmanship throughout the 2024 season. And whereas the team's hard work, perseverance, and commitment have led to an exceptional season culminating in winning the Mid-Ohio Athletic Conference Championship. And whereas the coaches and players have demonstrated not only excellence on the court, but also the values of teamwork, integrity, and respect that exemplify the best of the Marion City Schools. And whereas the success of this team has brought pride and recognition to Marion Harding High School and the entire Marion community. Now therefore it be resolved that the Marion City Schools Board of Education does hereby recognize and congratulate the Marion Harding High School Girls Tennis Team for their remarkable achievement in securing the 2024 MOAC Championship. And be it further resolved that this proclamation be presented to the team and the coaching staff in recognition of the outstanding performance and as an expression of appreciation from the Marion City Schools community. Congratulations to the players, coaches, and supporters who made this championship season possible. We look forward to many more accomplishments in the future, and we'd like to vote and present this the 21st day of October 2024, which is today. So I make a motion that we approve this proclamation.
Second.
Any discussion or words for this team?
No, congratulations. That's awesome.
I would like to know, Coach Pitts, how many years have you been at the helm of the tennis team? I think longevity also...
I have to say, I'm pretty sure this was my 31st year.
Wow. Thank you. Anything further?
Nope, congratulations, job well done.
Thank you.
Well deserved. Congratulations, and again, we'll stick around for just a couple more minutes and we'll take pictures. So next I would like to introduce...
One second, we got to get the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Ratliff.
Yes.
Ms. Swanger.
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer.
Yes.
Mr. Guyer.
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, ladies.
So next I'd like to introduce proclamation honoring Ivy Russell, who had a record-breaking achievement in girls soccer this year. She had outstanding performance, breaking, again, the history, in the history of the program, the most goals in a season. So with that being said, I'd like to turn things over to Mr. Kearns.
We've got Coach Courtney Arons and Ivy Russell here with us tonight.
All right, for as long as he will let me speak, which might not be long, I just wanted to say Ivy scored 51 goals this season, which put her, first in the MOAC, leading by 26 individual points and also 25 goals to her next competition, and that includes teams like Clearfork in Ontario, if you don't know, are very talented. And she also had seven assists, putting her at like 80% of all of her goals scored this season, so she was definitely a huge asset for us. But even beyond her goals, she, the work she put into her team and, you know, the love and care she gave to them made it possible for her to lead this team to a winning season, first winning season ever, so just really appreciated having her this season.
I did want to mention 51 goals, but they're among the state leaders as well. 51 goals is a lot of goals in a season. And I know Ivy, like Coach mentioned, this is the first time, and we started soccer on the girls' side here back in the mid-'90s, this is the first time they've had a winning season. And I know Ivy's just as proud of that as scoring all the goals, so fantastic achievements.
And did I hear, the girls' team overall, the record this year was the best record they've had in many years?
It's best ever. This is the first time in 30 years we've had a winning record on the girls' side.
Wow, congratulations.
So I think we're on to 9B, which is the Superintendent recommends the approval of the proclamation honoring a new Harding Girls Soccer season scoring record. So whereas Ivy Russell, a member of the Marion Harding High School Girls Soccer Team, has demonstrated remarkable skill, dedication, perseverance throughout the 2024 season. And whereas Ivy Russell's outstanding performance has resulted in breaking the single-season scoring record in the history of Marion Harding High School, a testament of her hard work, talent, and determination. And whereas her achievement represents not only individual excellence, but also serves an inspiration to her teammates, coaches, and the entire Marion community. And whereas Ivy's record-breaking season brings pride and recognition to Marion Harding High School and showcases the high-level athleticism within Marion City Schools. Now therefore it be resolved that the Marion City Schools Board of Education does hereby recognize and commend Ivy Russell for her extraordinary accomplishment in setting a single-season scoring record for the Marion Harding High School Girls Soccer Team. And be it further resolved that this proclamation be presented to Ivy Russell in acknowledgement of her exceptional performance and as an expression of appreciation for the Marion City Schools community. Congratulations Ivy on your historic achievement, and may your future endeavors be equally successful, presented this 21st day of October 2024, which is today. Congratulations. And I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Comments from the Board?
So Ivy, what year are you in school?
I'm a junior.
Junior, so, okay, so she's a junior's. So we got one more year?
Yes.
Awesome.
52 goals this year.
Is there a chance to break the state record?
Career?
Yeah.
She's more than 50, she'll be in the...
That's what we look forward to.
Good deal, congratulations.
The bar is high.
Any further comment?
Congratulations to your teammates, absolutely.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff.
Yes.
Mr. Guyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Swanger.
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer.
Yes.
Proclamation passes.
We get pictures before we move forward with the...
One thing also, while they're getting pictures, we'll have a lot more student athletes next month as they finish up their seasons, and we'll also have some musicians here next month. I know the band has scored one, and they're still finishing up their season as well, so a lot more to come.
I know what tennis is.
You guys had frames as well, we have to get signatures, I'll give you back your bag.
Mom went right here.
I just, I just...
I can get right between you.
Yeah, I'm going to throw you some more.
These are things I know, yeah.
It's my real location.
It's a little second later on.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Oh, are you sure?
Yeah. Get this back to the record.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ratliff. Next, just want to take a second, last, on October 7th, we did State of the Schools and we did a presentation, and we had a couple of other schools that had made some progress that we may have failed to mention that night, so want to make sure that we give notoriety to a couple of schools. Hayes Elementary had three stars in progress. Garfield had three stars in progress, and then Grant had three stars in progress as well. So if any of the staff members are here, thank you for your leadership, very much appreciated. Next, on my agenda would be an update regarding House Bill, or House, Senate Bill 29, which is a new state law that strengthens a protection and oversight of student data. It has specific requirements around schools' technology and technology providers, how we handle student records in addition to school-issued devices to ensure data is securely managed. So with that being said, I'm going to ask, I'm going to turn things over to Tabitha, who is going to present information to us tonight.
Okay, so Senate Bill 29 has lots of things in it, but I just want to highlight three things that we're working on at the district level that has issues with technology. The first thing is, we have to send a notification to parents and guardians with a list, a link to a list, so they can review any curriculum, testing, or assessment technology providers that the district uses. On that list, they can review the DPA, which is the Data Privacy Agreements for each of the providers. We have to send it by August 1st of 2025, and then each year after that on August 1st. So we are already working on that. We've also surveyed the teachers to see what other sites that they use with their students in making sure that we have data privacy agreements that meet, I put the three things at the bottom that is in the bill, that the providers have to agree that they will do, and if they don't agree, then we will either not use them or we'll have to come up with an alternative at that point. So, most of our big curriculum providers that we already have contracts with already meet some of these, we just need to put them, everything all in one place. And then the contracts for the DPAs, anything that is, that we want after October 24th, then has to meet these requirements. But if we're already in contract, so if we have a five-year agreement with them, we're good until that comes up for renewal. So anything that is renewed or new after October 24th, we have to make sure that we meet these guidelines.
Now, Ms. Werner, on that first one, all parents and guardians were already able to review all that stuff, it's just now we have to send them notice?
Yes, and we have to put it in a location that they can get to.
Okay.
With all of them, and we're already working with a provider, we had a meeting to get that all set up, and that way it would be easy for them and anyone else that needs to go and look at. They also need to know, like, what data the vendor is taking and what they're using it for, so that will be in one location.
I guess my question is, anytime that someone, a parent, for instance, wanted to review our curriculum, we were happy to do that. Now we just have to make sure we proactively give the information, is that correct?
Correct, that's correct. Thank you for that clarification, yes. Okay, so the second notification that we are required to send is reminding parents that school-issued devices will be monitored. This needs to be done by October 24th of this year, so we're sending notifications on the 22nd and on the 24th, just to make sure that we meet this requirement. Also, I just put on there just to make sure that you know that we do use GoGuardian as our monitoring and filtering software, so we're not doing anything different than what we normally do, we're not changing anything, we're just, again, notifying parents that this is what is happening. The one thing that's in this bill that a lot of people are having issues with, school-issued device means hardware, software, the device, and the account that the school district is giving the students. So it's not, just because it says school-issued device doesn't necessarily mean device, it's everything that accompanies that, so, okay? And then the third thing is the 72-hour trigger notification to parents if the student's school-issued device was accessed and why. So notifications need to start on October 24th. We use GoGuardian Beacon for monitoring for alerts to life and safety issues, and then the 72-hour notification may be temporarily withheld if the notice itself would pose a threat to life or safety. Now, we're already doing some of this, like, if there's an issue, the principal, guidance counselor, whatever, makes phone calls, but this specifically says a written notification, so we'll have to follow that up. Brandy Hobart has already created a Google form that we'll push out to our administrators and our counselors that they can fill out with all the requirements. We've got some guidance from Neola that we're going to work on with what that guidance, what the notification actually needs to look like, and then that will go home to parents anytime something is triggered in the system for something that we need to look into. Or if we need to look into an issue with the student's device or account, then that will be a notification home to parents also.
And that, the notification could potentially be online, or does it have to be written in a letter form?
It can be email.
Okay.
Yes, that's our plan right now.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And then, on the last page, we just put some challenges on here. I have had probably more meetings over Senate Bill 29 than I have probably anything else that I have done since I've been doing technology in the district. There's lots of issues with Senate Bill 29, and some of the things were pushed in at the last minute, so I am being told by BASA, Neola, Meta, ESCCO, that they're going to reconvene as soon as the elections are over, just to get some of the things specific in there and changed a little bit to make sure that everyone understands what it is that they meant when they put this bill together. Some of the things on here, the definition of educational record versus depicted personal use versus student use, those clarifications need to be made. Contractual requirements with technology providers, those are really going to be difficult to do on some things because some of the contracts are not necessarily written. When a teacher or student goes in, it asks them, hey, you know, do you agree to these things? Those things we have to follow up on also. The likely, likelihood of over-notification and notification fatigue to our parents. So we're looking at, we've created an email that these notifications will come from, so that way they'll know if Mr. Murphy or the school sends out a notification that's coming differently than what the notifications will from the 72-hour trigger, just so that way they can distinguish between the two of them. And then the impact on licensure, the only thing in this bill that talks about any penalties, I guess, would be teacher licensure or administrator licensure, and that comes under the Data Privacy Agreements. So if they, if the staff member, they go ahead and use the vendor, even though we don't have a Data Privacy Agreement, if it becomes an issue, then their licensure can come into play with that. But those are things that need to be clarified in the, when they reconvene then after the election, so. Questions, there's a lot to it, a lot to it, but these are the things that we're working on and we'll have them in play this week.
And we don't have to send the notification out before August 1st, right?
Of the...
Are we planning on...
The Data Privacy Agreements, that's correct.
Are we planning on doing it earlier than that?
I think we can as soon as we get the lists, the lists all together, but we're still gathering stuff from, from staff members to get that all put together, so I don't know that we're planning on doing that.
Yeah, so the first step is obviously getting the list of what we use curriculum-wise, and, you know, that's what we're doing first.
Correct.
So parents, if they're watching this, might not see this stuff until August or after the school year's out.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So for me, when I looked on Board Docs for this Senate Bill, a couple of things stood out for me. When they talk in the final reflections, and maybe you and I could talk about it, where they talk about Senate Bill places some daunting requirements on the district, and it isn't clear what the real impact and risk that the district face from it. This bill does not indicate which enforcement agencies will be responsible for ensuring compliance or how they'll go about enforcing them, that's number one. And then, lastly, it is important to ensure that the contracts also include provisions related to accessibility of technology for disabled individuals, because I know there are a lot of people, 504s, IEPs, and those kind of things, which is mandated by the Americans with Disabilities Act. It is advisable that districts seek legal counsel review before contracts are formally adopted to ensure terms that meet this requirement. That's going to be difficult, I think, you know, with the ADA. And so my question, is that your department right there, just two people?
No.
Okay, all right, so I'd be interested in the, in the American with Disabilities Act and how we're going to make sure that maybe when parents do their review of IEPs and those type of things, as we sit down and talk about structure and changes in those particular things, that this is definitely something that may help them along the way. And I just say that because I'm a surrogate and I know, you know, all the bits and pieces that go into this, and this is important.
Right. We've already, the vendors out there are already all over this because we're not the only state that has put some of this into play, so they're already on those kind of things. It's the smaller one-off programs that we use that we'll have to work with, but the bigger ones are already going to have these, and then, yes, they do suggest that we have legal look over all of them before they are assigned, so.
And I can tell you, we've had multiple staff members attend conferences and attend sessions in getting input from attorneys and lawyers, and then we, of course, will consult with our own legal team as well, moving forward.
I'm glad, I saw that Neola did have some samples, you know, on the site, so I'm glad, when you mentioned Neola, I was like, you know, so thanks for that.
Yeah, there's been lots of organizations that has chimed in on all of this, which was nice. It would have been difficult to try to figure some of this out without them, so, thanks.
One question, when you put likelihood of over-notification or notification fatigue, how many notifications is a parent going to receive potentially?
Yeah.
Because we send them, we send them the one, right?
Right. So anytime their student's device has been accessed, so we do have some issues where, like, if a student is writing a paper and it flags something in there, then those are things we're going to have to notify parents.
Gotcha, so it could be depending on the user...
I'm sorry, I'm just...
Yeah, no, I know.
I'm just saying, one situation could end up in four emails, the teacher maybe saw it, then they refer it to the counselor, possibly the principal, so those, you know, and they filter through and be investigated. So those, you know, as they filter through and be investigated, it might cause some over-notification, but according to the bill, we have to. So we just think it's important that the board and the community understand. And I think there's some language that'll go in the notice to families this week that we also have to send notifications, so bear with us, and where emails will be coming from, so they understand it's the bill requirements.
So when we're talking about over-notification, we're talking about, for sure, everybody's going to get one a year about what the websites are that we're using, for sure.
Correct.
And then if we access it because maybe the user is doing something that flags, then we have to notify at that point. You're saying if it goes up the chain, it could go all the way to superintendent level, and everybody's getting, I mean, along the way gets notified. But those are the only one, so if there's a yearly, and then if there's an incident, then we have to report the incident. But other than that, let's say my daughter's going to school, she never has an incident, I'm just getting the one yearly, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we'll get one if they go around that firewall kind of a thing? Will parents get a notification? Because I know they're always trying to, I don't know, MTV or whatever.
Yeah, it will get flagged.
Okay.
It will get flagged.
Because I saw that at Grant the other day, when they were trying to look up some type of person or whatever, and they said, darn, we couldn't get around it. But if they had got around it, that would be flagged.
Correct.
And then, lastly, I think for me, the 72 hours is, we have 72 hours to notify them if we had to get in because of a threat of safety of any sort, correct?
Correct. And there's lots of other things in this Senate bill of...
So it allows, it allows us, yep, it allows us to get in immediately, and then we have up to three days to contact their parents to say, here's why we got in?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
So I guess one of my questions would be, do we have the staffing to monitor, I mean, because we know how many notifications we can get on GoGuardian or whatever. Do we have enough staffing to monitor this and send out the notifications within 72 hours that we need to send?
We're going to do our best possible that we can. Brandy and I had a meeting with GoGuardian to see if there was a way that they can help with those situations. And they 100% can, but they don't have that out there yet. They're working on it. I was hoping to hear from them today. So if anything gets triggered, then it can help send a notification, because it, what we wanted to do was, parents could just log into the GoGuardian portal and be able to see things that have happened or what their students are doing. But that's not a notification. The parent would have to know to go in there, and to do that, we have to send them a notification with the information that is in that Senate bill. So we can't do what would be convenient, I guess. So GoGuardian's working on trying to help us with that piece of it.
So, again, because I have worked in this department, on average, I mean, based on this bill and based on previous history, on average, how many incidents would you say we have, maybe a day or a week? Do you know offhand or not?
No, I don't even want to guess, so. It's not one.
I guess, you know, we're trying, these two have worked tirelessly with the tech team to get this resolved and automate it as best we can. And the lobbyists for the law firm, BASSA, Neola, they are already hard at work before the laid-up session reconvenes, so that they can change. There are about two sentences that they would change, and this bill would alleviate tons of work for school districts. So everybody is well aware. And again, as our member Dyer said in the Neola update, in the SB 29 draft, it does say that there's really no oversight yet defined by the legislators with this bill. So while they're working that out, we're working the best we can to make sure that we're doing everything we can, and then hopefully some modification in language happens before the semester change.
Thank you, Tab. Mr. Ratliff, that concludes superintendent's report.
On to item four, Assistant Superintendent's Report. Mr. Haner.
Yes, sir. Good morning, President. I'm going to continue on with our Love Our School update. As you're aware, back in August, we put an initiative on with our principals, "Love your city, love your school." And so we put that on to our principals, and they created videos, PowerPoints, things of that nature, to show the love for their school. What you're about to see is an AI-generated video for Hayes Elementary.
Hi, I'm Alex, the AI virtual assistant at Hayes Elementary. I'm excited to be back with you. Today, I am here to help the staff at Hayes share why they love Hayes. There are many reasons why we love our school. However, we think it would be awesome to see and hear from some of our students and parents. We ask students and parents to share their message on hearts we proudly displayed in our entranceway. I was also able to talk to some parents, students, and a few teachers and ask, what do you love about Hayes? Here are a few of their answers.
I enjoy my kids being at Hayes because the school is small, they get a lot of individualized attention, all the teachers in the whole building know them, and I just know that it's a safe place for my kids to be.
I love Hayes because of field day, I feel safe, we have the best principal ever, and math.
Hayes is just wonderful because they're so understanding, they're patient, they're just all amazing, every one of them.
I love Hayes because we do what's best for kids. This is such a warm and inviting environment, and we have a lot of fun. I've been at all of the buildings except for one, and Hayes is by far my favorite. Every day I come to work, and the staff has smiles on their faces, and we all love being together.
The Hayes community definitely has a passion for this little school with a big heart. As you have seen and heard, the Hayes community loves our dedication to learning, the staff, the friendship, the safe environment we have created, and everyone is kind, respectful, and helpful. We love our school.
Mr. President, that concludes my portion.
Thank you.
And I must say, the Looper Line is the best at Hayes. I love the Looper Line.
Well, it doesn't hurt that you have, it always helps if you have the best principal ever, so. Appreciate that, Mr. Haner. Item five, the treasurer's report, motion to approve the board meetings from September 16th, 2024. I'll make the motion.
Second?
Any discussion? Any problems with those minute meetings? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. On to item 5B, the financial approvals. This is a motion to approve the following financial items, the September checks, September fund report, and the September financial report. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
How about Mr. Wyblin's mic? I think Mr. Guyer voted, he was the last one.
Yeah, I got that, thank you.
Motion carries. On to item 5C, donations. The treasurer recommends approval of the following donations, $5,000 for HHS PBIS School Fund from the Mary Lee and Peg Hamilton Charitable Foundation. And then a second item, which would be the ICE machine valued at $52.17.60 from the Grant Middle School Athletic Boosters. Well, it's for Grant Middle School from the Athletic Boosters, I guess I can correct that. And I will make a motion to approve those donations.
Second?
Any discussion?
I would just say it's the Merle and Peg Hamilton Fund.
Merle, thank you. Keep me on my toes, Ms. Swanger. No discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
ICE machine, do we know where that's located at Grant? Where's it?
Y.
Yep.
Yeah, it's in, it's down in the athletic wings, it's a, 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 it's[1344.16] They would just be there, they're departing on the twenty-seventh of December, and they'd be back on the twenty-eighth, so really talking about a one-day trip.
And you're, you're obviously recommending it.
Absolutely, yes.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Guyer will second. Any discussion? Another thing I'd like to say is, I agree with the superintendent's sentiments, and I congratulate the basketball team for, again, over the, the break, they're taking that opportunity to go somewhere else and give our kids an experience they wouldn't otherwise have, so appreciate Coach Pearson doing that. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Item nine D is the DECA Marketing CTE Overnight Trip. Mr. Superintendent?
Yep, CTE Business Marketing Pathway to the Charlotte Convention Center. Departure dates the November fifteenth through the seventeenth. It's a tremendous opportunity for this program. As some of you know, I'm a big advocate for workforce development, developing opportunities for kids to prepare for the workforce, give them other options or educational options for the future, and this is a tremendous opportunity, and I believe this is something that's been done in pastures as well, so I certainly support it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Again, thanks to Ms. Davis. I think last year they went to California, this year they're going to Charlotte, so congratulations to her and those kids, and thank you to her. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Item nine E is the Resolution to Authorize Meta to Include Marion City Schools in RFP for the Purchase of Retail Electric Service. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, so this is a resolution with Metropolitan Educational Technology Association, which represents school districts and RFP competitive process for electric service. It is regarding the, the July twenty-fifth billing cycle with initial contract term of two to three years, and it's surely just to ensure that we get the best deal possible.
And this is the best deal for electric, right?
Yeah, that, it's a large consortium, so.
Is there any, is there any way, and I don't know that we have or have not, but is there any way, I think, Board Member McKinnis had once talked about, is there any way for us to do any kind of solar energy at all, to save some of the costs? Do we know?
I'd have to check into that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, because we have a lot of roofs, that we could be placing this to maybe curb the cost. I saw some of our Ohio Edison and other bills and the checks, and it was kinda outrageous. They were paying, you know, some, over thirty grand, I guess, a month in bills, so I don't know if potentially, it was, it was talked about by a former board member before, and I don't think it got off the ground, so I don't know if we can look at something like that, but.
Yeah, we potentially could, and I think, and I don't know if it's either Jolene or Jake, maybe you had mentioned it, but we've had some conversation recently about the increase has been dramatic.
Correct.
The forecast is going to be dramatic in terms of those costs in the, in the future, so.
Yeah, if we can look at any ways to curb some of those utilities, it would help us tremendously, but I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Nine F is a Resolution on the Grant Auxiliary Gym Roof Repair. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, this one, it's a resolution authorizing a contract with Garland's DBS Incorporated for the Grant Middle School School Auxiliary Gym Roof Repair, based on a Higher Vice Code one sixty-seven point zero eight-one. I believe this was a conversation at the board committee meeting, and I'm gonna ask Jake if he could chime in and give a little bit more detail about this.
Yeah, so this was the roof that was damaged about two months ago, a month and a half ago, from the wind. The insurance company inspected it. We came up with about twenty-five percent that was wind damaged, and actually pulled it off of the insulation. It was glued down, they pulled it off the insulation. So they were gonna reimburse this for approximately twenty-five percent. We went through the process with Garland, we received four bids, and that twenty-five percent should be about forty thousand dollar reimbursement. Still working with the insurance company, they're trying to settle on thirty-five thousand right now. I said, no, we, we're, it should be about forty, so we're still working through that. If I don't get a resolution with them here in another week, we'll just refer to the attorneys again, like we did the gym floor.
And is this a, to replace the whole roof or the damaged portion?
No, I'm, I'm doing the whole roof because it's been pieced over time, several different ages of roofs up there, we're gonna make it all one twenty-year warranty and be done with it.
This is to get a warranty, then?
Correct, twenty-year, yep.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now we're to item nine G, the non-teaching supplemental. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, section G is the non-teaching supplemental, so you'll just see the recommendations for approval there for non-teaching supplemental positions, freshman cheerleader advisor is listed there.
And I think nine G, H, and I, the way I take it, these have been pulled out because they're family members of the board, for instance. Nine G would be Mr. Wibling's wife, nine H would be my youngest sister, nine I would be someone related to you, Mr. Guyer?
Yeah, my brother-in-law.
Okay.
That'd be Craig, Mr. President.
So they, they would normally be in the consent agenda, but we pulled them out separately, is what I understand.
Correct.
Okay. So it'd be nine G, which would be Ms. Wibling for cheerleader advisor. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Nine H would be the motion for, it'd be my youngest sister Amber Kyle to be Assistant Varsity Cheerleading Advisor.
I'll make the motion, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff, though, can you, if you gotta be pulled out, can you make a, can you still make the motion now?
He didn't. He didn't.
I did, no.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure.
He made it, she's second.
Okay, cool.
Yep.
Cool.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Upstate. Nine I is the, the head varsity girls' basketball by Mr. Corey White. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Upstate.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Item ten on the agenda would be the ESCCO Statement of Work SOS. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, this is a contract with Educational Service Center of Central Ohio. This is a contract that has happened in previous years, they provide specialized onsite support for our students. I do want to mention that in two of the contracts listed, the actual FTE, the estimated total was in there, so one of them is fifty-six thousand, nine hundred, eleven dollars and eight cents, plus mileage reimbursement and a four percent fiscal fee. I also want to mention that there's another one that has a estimated total of sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred, two dollars and seventy-four cents, with, again, four percent fiscal fee, mileage rate, plus five percent fiscal fee. So, there's one documented here that had one full-time FTE, the salary wasn't listed in here, for transparency purposes, I wanted to make sure the board understands what that is. It's an estimated cost of a hundred, seven thousand, two hundred, eleven dollars and sixty-six cents. And if you would like any additional detail regarding those services that are provided, I know Jen Sheridan is here, and she could provide some of those details if you like.
This is on ten A, which is the one oh seven, two eleven, sixty-six. Is anybody wanting additional details for Ms. Sheridan? Ms. Dyer, would you like to hear from Ms. Sheridan on this?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to hear from Ms. Sheridan?
No, I'm not raising my hand.
No, I, I know that, I'm just asking if you want to hear from Ms. Sheridan any further on this?
No.
Okay. It's also my understanding that this would have, that they, these three positions we're getting ready to vote on have already started in the district, this is maybe a little late, but we had some. Normally, this would have been sent in June, I think Ms. Sheridan had at least called me and, and told me that it was gonna be on there, that somehow we missed these three positions, they've already started work, and these are not, in theory, new positions.
Correct.
These are what we've always done, it just didn't get, for whatever reason, on our agenda to be passed.
I, yes, absolutely. Ideally, I think because of transition or whatever it may be in the summer months, that these may have been missed as contracts, so.
He extended one to a full, five days.
Yeah, we had three full times, one of them's now gonna be, three part times, we have one now full-time and two part times, because we needed the extra services. But I don't want anybody to think these are new, this is what has been going on in the district for quite some time. Okay?
Yep.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve ten A.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Item ten B, I'll make a motion to approve ten B.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Item ten C, I'll make a motion to approve ten C.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Item eleven is executive session, is there any reason to go into executive session before the consent agenda?
I would like, I have a matter.
Okay.
That requires executive, executive session, Board President.
Okay, are you making a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I will second. Any further discussion? And Ms. Dyer, there's a, a second, is this before the consent agenda that you want to talk, because there's a second executive session at the end?
It, it doesn't, wherever we want to put it, I just have.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the.
That'd be easier if we do put it at the end.
Yeah, there's a.
I do have a matter that should come before the board.
Okay, so that is item seventeen, so.
I didn't see it, okay.
Yeah. So do you want to?
I can wait, yes.
Withdraw that, or, okay, take those motions off the table? No reason to go into executive session on the consent agenda, so item, anybody have an amendment to the consent agenda, which would be item twelve? Seeing none, item thirteen is the consent agenda approval, all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine, will be enacted by the board in one motion in the form listed below, the board will follow Board Policy zero one six five point one, Section E, in regards to the consent agenda. The superintendent is recommending approval of all consent agenda items, employment is specifically conditioned on and subject to successful background checks, receipt and final administrative review of all application records, and receipt of all other necessary documentation. So this would be thirteen A, B, C, D, E, to K? A through K. I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Item fourteen, which would be items removed from the consent agenda, we don't have any. Item fifteen A is the future board meetings, which we have listed. Also, I think, as to item fifteen, something to think about, I think, for the board in the future, is we've always listed it, well, this board has ran meetings starting at six thirty, because we were trying to do committees before the board. I think there's some talk on those being moved, so I don't know if we would want to keep it at six thirty. Obviously, at six thirty, we have our staff that sits around and tries to wait for the meeting. I don't think it's necessarily bad we keep them, hopefully they're working in between the end of the day and, and the meeting, but we might consider moving that up to a five or five-thirty potentially, if we're not gonna run committees beforehand. Don't have to decide that tonight, but just something to think about. Item sixteen, committee reports, anybody have a committee report that they would like to share? Hearing none, student achievement, Ms. Dyer, would you like to share anything on that?
Um, no, I think Mr. Murphy did a great job in offering the resolutions to our student athletes, and I will take that in lieu of any report, oh, wait a minute, no, I'm sorry. The trip that I went on, the Memphis Freedom Riders, I would just like to thank all the staff and all the students who went and learned a lot about social justice, and I would like to commend them for their behavior in Memphis, because when we left Memphis, it would still stand, so. It was a great opportunity, just want to thank those students, and all of you are invited, we're gonna have a, a dinner on Sunday at three o'clock at Logos Christian Ministry to talk about the funding, and all of you are invited to come, so.
Thank you.
When was that, again, Ms. Dyer?
Logos, three o'clock, Sunday.
And hopefully as well, Ms. Dyer, I had talked to Mr. Murphy, and they're gonna be talking about potentially more of our kids getting involved in the event, the Piece of Freedom, puts on for MLK Junior Day, about more submissions from this district, so working with him, I know that maybe you can work with him and Mr. Jackson.
Well, he, um, has met with the elders council, and I know that he has an invite to the Marion Minority Commission, and he's hit the ground running as far as those diverse opportunities are concerned, and I'm very pleased with the efforts he's putting for, for that.
Do you, do you know the date of those submissions?
It's a little different.
December, right?
This year, it is going to be throughout the month of December, it's usually pretty hectic, because students are excited about Christmas and Christmas break, and so submissions are gonna be able to be turned in to Johnny Jackson or the Marion Public Library throughout the month of December.
December, okay. Ms. Swanger, anything as far as legislatively?
We just went over.
Yeah.
So.
Still a mess, we got it. Item seventeen is a motion to go into executive session. I think, Ms. Dyer, your motion, you want to bring that forward now, correct? Motion to go into executive session?
Yes.
And I will, I will second that, and obviously, we have no, we don't plan on taking any action afterwards, so those that want to depart May, if you want to hear us adjourn at the end of that, you're welcome to stay.
Which reason are we going for?
Personnel?
I think we, she is going in for personnel, mine would also be for item six, details relative to security arrangements and emergency response protocols for the public body and public office. Yeah, six, which would be security. So, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.